Good evening. I will now call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, December the 7th, 2020, and we will begin our meeting with prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Pastor Lindsay.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the privilege it is to do the city's business. I thank you for each and every one of these councilors. We thank you for the sacrifice. We think of the unusual circumstances which require most to be at home and other places tonight. So we thank you for technology. We thank you for all those who make this possible, but thank you for the privilege of serving this great city. I pray especially for these councilors. I pray for their health. I pray for their strength. I pray for wisdom and courage, Lord. Well, we're just privileged to do the city's business. I pray that you'll be watch over the meeting tonight. Pray, Lord, that what we do will honor and please you, and we thank you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America until the vote.
Madam Clerk, please conduct a voice roll call, and councilors please signify by stating your name and answering present on the clerk's reading of your name so that we have a clear record of who was in attendance. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, present.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, present.
Counselor Bain?
Counselor Bain, present.
Counselor Barth?
Counselor Barth, present.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, present.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, present.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, present.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, present.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, present.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, present.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, present.
Counselor Gray? Counselor Gray? Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, present.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, present.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, present.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, present.
Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, present.
Counselor Masgary?
Counselor Masgary, present.
Counselor McCormick?
Counselor McCormick, present.
Counselor Mallory?
Counselor Mallory, present.
Counselor Oliver? Counselor Oliver? Counselor Osalee?
Counselor Osalee, present.
Counselor Ray?
Good evening, Counselor Ray, present.
Counselor Potts, present.
All right, Counsel Robinson?
Counsel Robinson, present. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have 23 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no guests this evening, so the next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held electronically and in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, December 7th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings mean to conduct any and all business that may come properly before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osalee, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the State of Indiana, a call to be published in the court and commercial record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, November 27th, 2020, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 307, 310, and 315, 2020, said hearing to be held on Monday, December 7th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the public assembly room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance numbers 18 and 28, special ordinance numbers 7 and 8, general resolution numbers 26 and 27, special resolution numbers 21 and 22. Joseph H. Hogsett, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Vice President Adamson, please have the motion.
Yes, Mr. President. I would move to amend the agenda to add proposal number 351-2020 found under interruptions of proposals to the agenda as the first item for action under final adoption this evening. There are timing considerations that require this proposal to be acted on before the end of the year. Counselors should all have copies of that proposal at their desk in their packets. Can I so move?
Second.
Thank you. The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? I think none. Madam Clerk, we'll proceed to roll call for our vote on the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye on the amendment.
Counselor Bain?
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Masgary?
Counselor Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Mallory?
Aye.
Counselor Oliver? Counselor Osalee?
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson?
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Counsel Oliver? Mr. President, that makes 24.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we will vote on the adoption of the agenda as amended. Please, Madam Clerk, a roll call.
Counsel Adamson?
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay?
Counsel Anay, aye.
Counsel Bain?
Counsel Bain, aye.
Counsel Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown?
Counsel Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counsel Dilk?
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans?
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans?
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves?
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray? Counselor Gray? Counsel Hart?
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson?
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Jones?
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counselar Larison?
Counselar Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis?
Lewis, aye.
Counsel Masgary?
Masgary, aye.
Counsel McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Mallory?
Aye.
Counsel Oliver? Counsel Osalee?
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray?
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson?
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Counsel Gray? Counsel Oliver?
Counsel Gray was aye.
Thank you. Mr. President, that means 24 as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Proposal number 351-2020 will now be placed on the agenda as the first item of business under final adoption for action later this evening. The next item on our agenda is approval of journals. Do I have consent? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, councilors. We will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And this first item on our agenda is proposal number 330, which recognizes the Indianapolis Fire Department's official international accreditation designation from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. Who will be presenting on this this evening?
Counsel Gray. I will.
Please proceed.
Okay. City County Council's special resolutions, 330, 2020. This is a, what we're doing this evening is going to do a special resolution for the Indianapolis Fire Department announcing their official international accreditation designation from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. You know, Mr. President, there's nothing I like better than bragging on the Indianapolis Fire Department where I spent over 35 years being a part of this team. So here tonight, I will present to you a special City County Resolution. A special resolution recognizing the Indianapolis Fire Department official international accreditation designation from the Commission of Fire Accreditation International. Whereas on March 4th, 2020, Indianapolis Fire Department Chief Ernie Malone and his support staff were interviewed by the Commission's on Fire Accreditation International at the Center of Public Safety Excellence Conference in Orlando, Florida, as the final step in the process for accreditation. And whereas, the process which began in 2016 included an internal and external review of the organization and the services they provide to the community, including national peer review. And whereas, out of the 300,000 fire service agencies throughout the United States and Canada, only 270 are internationally accredited. This precision accreditation involves the development and maintenance of strategic plans, self-assessment manual, standards of cover, and a community risk assessment. And whereas, IFD hosted the peer review team this past January and were unanimously recommended for accreditation, leading to the wholehearted support of the accreditation destination, which is valid for five years. And whereas, IFD is the fifth agency in the state of Indiana to receive international accreditation and join the ranks of Clay Fire and South Bend, Griston Airport Base, and Fishers and Cornwall Fire Departments. And whereas, through their participation in this process, the Indianapolis Fire Department has already become a more efficient, data-driven, better-equipped, and higher-performing organization. Now therefore, section one, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognized the Indianapolis Fire Department Chief Ernie Malone and all firefighters and employees of the department and congratulates them in their recent international accreditation destination. Section two, the council further recommends the department for engaging in all aspects of the process to take a common sense approach to enhance the service delivered by the fire department and help them succeed in their duties to protect their communities even as it continue to grow in complexity, hazards, and risks. The mayor is invited to join this resolution by fixing his sign too. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Very good. Back to the speaker. Chairman Gray.
Yes, Chief Malone is unable to be here tonight, but I will make sure that he receives.
I'm on the call, Counselor. I'm here.
Oh, okay. Then let's hear from Chief Ernie Malone.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. I'll be brief. Just thank you so much, Counselor Gray, and all the council, mayor's office, controller's office. I especially want to thank our partners in labor, Local 416. Just to give you a little background on this, this is about a four-and-a-half-year effort for our community and for you to know how efficient and effective the operations of your fire department truly are. Not just from me telling you, but it's verified and it's validated through these processes. Now, Counselor Gray told you there's 30,000 fire departments in the U.S. Only 270 of those are accredited, but this department, while achieving that, is not going to stop. We are pursuing our ISO rating level number one. Currently, we're a number two. We thought we would have them out to review our department this fall, but due to COVID, that's been delayed through the first quarter of next year. But I'll tell you, that 30,000 to 281 becomes only 102 fire departments in the country that are both internationally accredited and have an ISO 1 rating for their city. And I'll further tell you that that 30,000 drops down to 10 that have accreditation ISO 1 and have a population of over 500,000. So our department fully intends during the first quarter of next year to be the 11th department out of 30,000 that meets those distinctions. So could not be proud of our department. You know, you bring these folks an idea and a vision, and they embrace it, and they take it further than I ever imagined, and the whole department bought into it. But I do want to recognize three specific people. That's Chief Matt Hens, Chief Trevor Wilson, and Captain Michael Tierney that lead our planning team. These three gentlemen walked the entire department through this four-and-a-half-year process, and I'm very proud of them and our whole organization. So thank you for the recognition. It's much appreciated.
Thank you, Chief. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Chief. It's very good to see you this evening. All right, our next, next item on our agenda is proposal number 331, which recognizes past and present women councilors of the Indianapolis Marion County City County Council. Who will be speaking on this this evening?
Let me ask that this, so we can have all of the former councilors with us. So if we could push this on to 2021, that would be amazing. So moved.
Second.
All right, motions been properly moved and seconded. I will have to take a vote on this. Madam Clerk? Will you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson?
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay? Counsel Anay? Counsel Bain?
Counsel Bain, aye.
Counsel Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots?
Counsel Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown?
Counsel Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino?
Carlino, aye.
Counsel Dilk?
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans?
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans?
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves?
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray?
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart?
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson?
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Jones?
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison?
Counsel Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis?
Miss, aye.
Counsel Masgary?
Masgary, aye.
Counsel McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Mallory?
Aye.
Counsel Oliver? Counsel Osalee?
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray?
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson?
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Counsel Anay? Counsel Oliver? Thank you, Mr. President. That is 23-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 354, which recognizes the 50th anniversary of the Indiana Black Expo. I'll have to read this on my own here, so bear with me. Proposal number 354, the special resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Indiana Black Expo. Whereas inspired by an expo event in Chicago, local organizers founded the Indiana Black Expo as a nonprofit organization in 1970 in the Circle City, marking the beginning of a cultural event now commonly known as the Summer Celebration, held in July every year. Whereas in 1983, IBE added the Circle City Classic to their calendar on the first weekend of October, highlighting a college football game between two historically black colleges and universities, and featuring concerts, a parade, and other cultural celebrations during this two-day event. Whereas, Indiana Black Expo has grown into a year-round, statewide, multifaceted community service organization with 12 chapter affiliates, working to create and advance opportunities for the African-American community in Indiana, touching more than 400,000 individuals each year. And whereas, over the years, IBE has continued to evolve and grow in order to encourage and empower the black community, finding new ways to address the most relevant issues to affect positive change and become a voice and vehicle for social and economic advancement. And whereas, IBE continues to seek out vital resources to provide year-round youth and family programs to advance opportunities for a higher quality of life through education, establish an economic foundation for the community through grants and business training, elevate artistic expression, and create awareness and action for proactive health. They strive to foster relationships between businesses, governmental agencies, educational institutions, youth service agencies, churches, and other community-based organizations to educate and uplift the community to create positive outcomes and empower change. And whereas, President and Chief Executive Officer Tanya McKenzie explains that IBE has helped to shape and advance African-American culture, heritage, and tradition while impacting numerous lives through economic, educational, social, and leadership opportunities for youth and families. And whereas, Indianapolis Mayor Joseph Hogsett exclaimed that the Indiana Black Expo is one of our city's most important annual gatherings and opportunity to celebrate and empower black residents and visitors. Its 50th anniversary is a testament to IBE's substantial contribution to Indianapolis's culture and economy, far beyond the 10 days each July. And whereas, the Indiana Black Expo's Summer Celebration and Circle City Classic represent a tiny fraction of the impact IBE has had on the lives of the black community in Indianapolis, their year-round programs and grants contribute greatly to creating equality and strengthening the community in our city, and we are better because of their efforts, said a certain individual sitting on the seat right now who is talking. Whereas, this year's Summer Celebration, featuring an exposition with vendors, employers, social services, and many other resources geared toward the black community, will also include free concerts at various venues downtown by legendary soul and R&B artists such as Keith Sweat, Stevie Mills, Johnny Gill, and El DeBarge, along with a special 50th anniversary gala now therefore been resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County. Section one, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly recognizes the 50th anniversary of the Indiana Black Expo and the organization's vital contributions for over half a century to become a voice and vehicle for social and economic advancement to create positive outcomes and empower change. Section two, the council thanks IBE for its commitment to the Indianapolis community, encourages them to continue to grow and evolve, and pledges to work together alongside IBE to achieve the goals of educating, uniting, and uplifting the community. Section three, the City County Council and mayor congratulate IBE on 50 years of great work in Indianapolis and look forward to what the next 50 will bring. Section four, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by fixing his signature here too. And section five, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. And I guess that would be directed to me. I so move.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments and councilors? All right, here none. I do believe that we have with us this evening, Ms. Tanya McKenzie. Ms. McKenzie?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Well, thank you. On behalf of our board of directors and our staff and all of our membership across the state of Indiana, I want to just thank the council and the mayor, Mayor Hogsett, for the special recognition. As you all know, we've served as that voice and vehicle for the last 50 years in our city and throughout the state of Indiana. And we've done that through our year-round programmatic initiatives. We've done it through our opportunity to showcase black culture here in Indianapolis by helping to give African-American residents a sense of belonging. And we've done that through our fundraising events, which President Osalee, you referred to, both Summer Celebration and Circle City Classic, which have contributed more than $700 million over the last 50 years to this economy. And the one thing that I would just say that is that we would not be able to do that without all of you, all of the support that you provided to us over the years, public safety, fire, a lot of DPW, a lot of different city agencies that we work with tirelessly, year after year, to put on what we do for this city. And so I would just like to thank all of you and thank the mayor and his team on behalf of the board and the staff of Indiana Black Expo. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Councilors, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. That motion carries. Ms. McKenzie, again, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Congratulations on 50 years.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 355. It's called on city government through the Department of Public Works to paint a message condemning anti-police sentiment on Shelby Street at an appropriate location, an appropriate location between its intersection with Cottage Avenue and its intersection with Olive Street. Who will be speaking on this this evening?
Mr. President, I will.
Counsel Hart?
Thanks, sir. Mr. President, I move to postpone special resolution number 355-2020 to next month's full council meeting.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Comments and councilors? Counsel Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel Hart, for your motion to postpone this proposal. I would ask my colleagues to vote no on this proposal, this motion to move to next month's meeting, so we can address it sooner rather than later. So again, I'd ask my colleagues to vote no on this proposal this evening to move it to next month's meeting, so we can address this proposal sooner rather than later. next month's meeting, so we can address this proposal sooner rather than later. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, very good. Additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none here and then? Yes, who's speaking?
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay?
Mr. President, I appreciate Counselor Chairman Robinson's request. I would ask my colleagues to consider the postponement. There are just a couple of tweaks that our caucus and the cosponsors feel are really important before we bring it up for final vote, so we're not asking necessarily for support of the proposal itself or the resolution itself, but merely just an opportunity to make some tweaks prior to the final vote. And I think we can commit that that final vote will be in January. And again, appreciate just the consideration, not again, of the resolution, but just the opportunity to present it in January in a more complete way. Thank you.
Very good. Any additional comments and counselors? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Sure, Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, no.
Counselor Anay?
Madam Clerk, would you mind signifying what the aye and the nay would represent? Is that unclear?
The motion to postpone?
Okay, I'm an aye. Thank you.
Counselor Bane?
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, no.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, nay.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
Nay.
Counselor Carlino?
Carlino, nay.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, nay.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, nay.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, nay.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, nay.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, no.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, nay.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, nay.
Counselor Lewis?
Lewis, nay.
Counselor Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, that's in the heart of my district. No one's notified me. Nay.
Counselor McCormick?
McCormick, nay.
Counselor Maury?
Yes.
Counselor Oliver? Counselor Oliver? Counselor Osalee?
Counselor Osalee, nay.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, nay.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, nay.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, nay.
Counselor Oliver? Mr. President, we have?
Counselor Gray was a no.
Thank you.
All right.
President Osalee, that would be nineteen, no, five yea, nineteen nay.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Chairman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, in a effort to honor Counselor Anay, who has requested postpone, to make some tweaks, Mr. President, I'll honor that request and ask, Mr. President, if we could, I move to send proposal three fifty-five to the Public Safety Committee to be heard this Wednesday evening, Mr. President, by the committee on Wednesday.
Second.
All right, that motion is improperly moved and seconded. Comments from counselors, please? Counselor Anay?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just prior to the vote, I appreciate Chairman Robinson's willingness to listen to the tweaks, and I find that to be extremely fair, and just want to appreciate his offering there, and I will be supportive of that, and I look forward to having a thoughtful discussion on this Wednesday night. Thank you.
Additional comments and counselors? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you take a little?
Mr. President? Yes, or Maury, if I may?
Yes, please.
Remind me, when we did this with Black Lives Matter, was that sent to committee?
I'll have to ask, Madam Counsel, do you recall?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, Black Lives Matter was not sent to committee.
That'll be all, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk? Please take a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Anay, aye, to send it to committee.
Counselor Bane?
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans? Counselor Ethan Evans?
Aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves? Counselor Graves?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Graves, I'm sure.
That's okay. Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Thank you. Counselor Maury?
Aye.
Believe Counsel Oliver is having technical difficulties. Counselor Osalee?
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, I have twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three fifty-six, which commits the City of Indianapolis and Marion County to working toward becoming the safest place for someone on the autism spectrum to live, work, and visit. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce everyone to my co-presenter this evening. This is my son, Dylan. If you guys, if the other counselors haven't had a chance to meet him yet, so he's going to hang out with me while I read this. "A special resolution committing the City of Indianapolis and Marion County to working towards becoming the safest place for someone on the autism spectrum to live, work, and visit. Whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a developmental disability that can cause significant social, communication, and behavioral issues. There is often nothing about how people with ASD look that sets them apart from other people. But people with ASD may communicate, interact, behave, and learn in ways that are different from most other people. The learning, thinking, and problem-solving abilities of people with ASD can range greatly from gifted to severely challenged. Some people with ASD need a lot of help in their lives, others need less. And whereas, a diagnosis of ASD now includes several conditions that used to be diagnosed separately: autistic disorder, pervasive developmental disorder not otherwise specified, and Asperger's Syndrome, these conditions are now all called autism spectrum disorder. ASD falls into the category of neurodiversity, which is a concept where neurological differences are to be recognized and respected as any other human variation. These differences can include those labeled with dyspraxia, dyslexia, attention deficit, hyperactivity disorder, dyscalculia, autistic spectrum, Tourette's Syndrome, and others. And whereas autistic autism spectrum disorder affects all nationalities, all creeds, all races, all religions, and all genders. It doesn't differentiate or affect only one group or another. Researchers and clinicians hypothesize that symptoms of autism spectrum disorder in males and females may differ, leading to many females not being diagnosed in a timely manner. ASD affects nearly one in forty-six people across the globe. Those diagnosed and undiagnosed make up two percent of Marion County's population. And whereas each person with autism spectrum disorder is a unique individual. People with ASD differ as much from one another as all people do. Children and adults with ASD may speak very, may speak or interact well with others. They may have good eye contact. They may be verbal or nonverbal. They may be bright of average intelligence or have cognitive deficits. And whereas early behavior-based interventions have positive effects on some children with autism spectrum disorder and less noteworthy effects on other children. Early services need to be based on individual children's needs and learning styles. Services for adults with ASD must be carefully individualized. Autism spectrum disorder costs a family sixty thousand dollars a year on average. The lifelong cost of care can be reduced by two-thirds with early diagnosis and intervention. According to a recent study funded by Autism Speaks, the lifetime cost of autism averages one point four to two point four million. And whereas, the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department and Marion County Sheriff's Office has committed that every employee, both officer and civilian, will receive training to become certified in working with those who are neurodiverse. They'll be working towards getting each department accredited by the International Board of Credential and Continue Education Standards, and whereas Indy Parks will be working with IBCCES to certify its employees to work with those on the autism spectrum. And will be working on creating and updating its current parks and programming to become sensory-friendly, and will be working towards its own accreditation. And whereas, Indigo has committed to training its drivers to better work with those with sensory sensitivities and those who are nonverbal, becoming one of the first transit agencies in the country to move towards the creation of an accreditation. And whereas, Visit Indy will work with our hospitality industry to make our city the best place for those who are neurodiverse to visit. They will work with hotels, restaurants, sports facilities, and other tourist and family destinations to create sensory-friendly locations. And Visit Indy will work to market our ASD-friendly city across the globe. And whereas, the Indy Chamber will work with IBCCES to certify companies across the city and train human resource personnel on ways to be more inclusive in their hiring and create sensory-friendly, or sensory-sensitive workplaces. And whereas, we will work closely with Easter Seals Crossroads, the Autism Society of Indiana, and other groups who work with those who are neurodivergent to make sure we're doing evidence-based work in making Indianapolis a better place, along with creating a campaign to increase the public's awareness on what autism spectrum disorder is and how to get more information about getting a diagnosis and support. Whereas, the City of Indianapolis prides itself on being inclusive and adaptive city. We are committing today to making the City of Indianapolis the safest place for people on the autism spectrum, autism spectrum disorder, to live, work, and visit. Now therefore, be resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and the Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the Indianapolis City County Council commits to making Indianapolis the safest, most welcoming city for those with autism spectrum disorder. Section two, the council encourages all residents of Marion County to learn more about autism spectrum disorder, neurodiversity, and those who are different than they are. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adaption and compliance with IC thirty-six three four fourteen. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
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 The motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments and counselors? Counselor Carlino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend my colleague Counselor Brown. From one mother to another, but also as an educator, I serve students with autism, and honestly, one of my best friends is on the spectrum, and this just makes me incredibly proud to see the work come out. It's so great to see you, Dill, tonight, and I'd like to request to be a cosponsor on this proposal tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McCormick?
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo my colleagues' sentiments as a mother with my three-year-old in the background, actually, supporting Dill and his friends and neighbors who are on the spectrum, and want to say that I'm excited to be a cosponsor for this, and I'm just excited to see this go through in our city.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Indianapolis families, so thank you to Counselor Brown for all of your efforts, and I'd love to be added as a cosponsor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Jackson? Chairman Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Kudos and hats out to you, Counselor Brown, as well as the light that this sheds on the work that is instrumental to the diversity of the training with IMPD for those they come in contact with who they may not know are artistic, that they can look through a different lens, so highlighting that and bringing that to light. Thank you for that. It's so much needed, especially in our black and brown communities and underserved communities. And to your son, your mom, Dill, where you're doing great work, looking out for you and championing for you and others like you, and to our community in Indianapolis, salute you again, Counselor Brown. Thank you, and I too like to be added as cosponsor.
Counselor Barth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to comment on the exceptional good work that Counselor Brown has done here. This is a very comprehensive and thoughtful approach. It brings in so many partners that is, that are going to have such a big impact on the city. I'm a brother of a person with a developmental disability myself, and I know that far too often, society doesn't make it easy for people with disabilities, so making sure that Indigo, the IMPD, and every aspect of our city is tuned in, accepting, and making the pathways for success easier for people with disabilities broadly, but those on the spectrum specifically, is incredibly good work. And so, thanks to her, and I thought I was a cosponsor. If I'm not, please add me, because I think this is very important work. Thanks again.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dill, I just wanted to say congratulations to you, buddy. You are a part of something momentum in our city and making big changes, thanks to your mother. Counselor Brown, just congratulations, great job, and this is just one of those Christmas and holidays, so it's greatly appreciated. I'm the uncle of a, my nephew who's on the spectrum, so I'm very, very proud to see you doing this work, and please add me as a cosponsor as well. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
I echo my colleagues' sentiments. Counselor Brown, congratulations too, and same thing that Counselor Evans said. What a wonderful way to wrap up twenty-twenty. It's nice to see so many partners gather together, and what a legacy for generations to come. What a legacy that you're leaving for your son and for so many people on the spectrum, so thank you, and please add me as a cosponsor, and congratulations again, and you did a phenomenal job. You're doing a phenomenal job, so thank you. And thank you for bringing a bright light to the end of our twenty-twenty. Thank you.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Thank you, President Osalee. Just wanted to echo everything colleagues have already said, and also Counselor Carlino as a fellow educator. And you know, especially, that's right, with students with special needs and see the great need for this in our city today, and you know, how people have interacted with IMPD is a great need, as well as people on public transit, and all the great partnerships that this brings together. Congratulations to you, and Congratulations to you. Growing up in elementary school, it means a lot to what it can mean as a kid. So thank you so much.
All right. Any additional comments from councilors? Counselor Ane.
Very, very briefly, just want to thank you again, Counselor Brown. I know we talked about it very briefly, and I look forward to the conversations in the future, but I've got some folks in my family on the spectrum, and I'm very much looking forward to seeing how this impacts their lives, as well as many, many lives throughout our city. And you spearheaded this and deserve a lot of the thanks and congratulations, and I look forward to continuing this great work as we head into the first of the year. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Brown, did you have any guests that you wanted to speak?
I do. I know the rest of my councilors will be very relieved to know that this is not going to cost the city any money. We are going to be fundraising everything through grants and other donations through our partner, the Easter Seals Crossroads. They are going to be partnering with us, along with working with us on workforce development and all sorts of things. And we are very lucky to have the president and CEO, David Dreith, with us tonight. So I'd like to introduce everyone to David Dreith.
Welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. We are so excited to be a part of this. So in the 1930s, our organization was founded by a group of young adults and their families around helping their young individuals with disabilities be included in the greater Indianapolis area. And so for us to come full circle 90 years later with Dill here present, to do the same thing is so exciting for us. And I actually want to thank President Osley for inviting or introducing me to Counselor Brown, and so that we could help create this partnership. We are thrilled to be a part of this, and we think this is going to change the way... When we say we're stronger together at Easter Seals, what we really mean is that we're stronger together when everyone in our community is completely included. And so we're very excited to be a part of it. Thank you.
And welcome. Counselor Brown, any additional comments?
I just want to thank all the councilors from the bottom of my heart. You know, it's really hard when you find out that your child's life is going to be a little bit harder than it should be. And to be able to have colleagues on both sides of the aisle that see how important this is, that see how important this is for everyone across the city, and how when we leave with kindness, that we can do great things. So I just wanted to thank you all for this. I also encourage everyone to go to IndieAutismProject.com, and you can sign up for more information. If you're on the spectrum, you know somebody that's on the spectrum, you have ideas, there's ways to submit there. So I'm just really grateful for all of you. So thank you all so much.
Excellent. Thank you. Well then, I would just ask all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by nay. Right, the motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Brown. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 362. But before we start, I would like to ask if Ms. Tommy Jones is with us this evening. Ms. Jones, are you with us? All right, I don't see Ms. Jones.
Yes, I am.
Well, welcome. I did not see you. Let me see. If you can say your name one more time or say hello, Ms. Jones?
Yes, I'm here. Yes.
All right, very good. Okay. Well, very good, welcome. So, proposal number 362 recognizes Tommy Jones for her 20 years of dedicated volunteer service as a member on the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation Board of Directors. And this evening, I would like to read out a special resolution in her honor. Ms. Jones, a special resolution recognizing Tommy Jones for her 20 years of dedicated volunteer service as a member on the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation Board of Directors. Whereas Indianapolis Streetcar System was converted to bus routes in 1953, which routes were then taken over by the city in 1975 with the establishment of the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation to administer the Metro Bus Service. IPTC adopted the Indigo Moniker in 1996. And whereas, a seven-member Board of Directors approves all of Indigo's major decisions with regards to operations, contracts, finance, and overall management of the transit system. And whereas, the bipartisan members are appointed to this board by the Mayor of Indianapolis and the City-County Council. And whereas, Tommy Jones was appointed to the IPTC Board by the City-County Council in June of 2000 and has continued to volunteer her time and energy for the past 20 years by serving the community to ensure transportation is accessible to all citizens. And whereas, Tommy is not new to public service, as she finished out her husband Paul's the City-County Council term after his sudden death in 1999. Although devastated by his loss, she carried on his love for people and their community by stepping into his shoes to serve Indianapolis by completing his unfinished council term, representing their Northside District well. And whereas, Ms. Jones has been involved in many successful initiatives during her tenure on the IPTC Board, including the construction and opening of the downtown Julia and Carson Transit Center, development of the Marion County Transit Plan for Rapid Transit, beginning with last year's Red Line opening, and helping to find alternative sources of funding to continue to increase services and ridership and bring planned transit projects to fruition. Now therefore, be resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County. Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes Tommy Jones for her 20 years of dedicated volunteer service as a member on the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation Board of Directors. Section 2, the council thanks Ms. Jones for decades of service and for the many other contributions she has made to the Indianapolis community over the years, and wishes her much success in future endeavors. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too. And then section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, councilors. The motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors?
Mr. President.
Chairwoman Gray.
I'd just like to say congratulations to Ms. Tommy Jones. I served both with her as well as her husband back in the 90s, and we had some great times and did some great things for the city. And I'd just like to wish her well in her continued retirement.
Very good. Counselor Cardino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo the sentiments of my colleague in just letting Ms. Jones know that we are indebted to her for her countless hours of service. And truly, she and her family are the epitome of servant leadership, and for that, we are grateful, we are thankful. Congratulations, Ms. Jones. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Graves.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Jones, I want to officially tell the story that it was you and your husband who introduced me to city government many, many years ago. So I owe you both and the friendship of your son, Paul, so much for the reason that I'm actually sitting in the seat right now. So thank you so much. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your family. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind words. I really appreciate all the kind things that were said tonight. I did my personal best. My husband and I, we started off registering people to vote in our neighborhood. We were the precinct committee people, and we worked ourselves all the way up to the city council. He worked himself all the way up to the city council. I was his campaign manager, and we passed out many a flyer in the area, getting him elected. And I was so proud when the council asked me to move over to the Transportation Board. I thought at first that they were just being kind to me because I had lost my husband, but after I got over there and found out I was really needed, and there were some things that I could do to help them get themselves organized and be the bus company that they are today. And I'm just so proud that I was there when Julia Carson Center was built. That was important to me. One of the first persons to my house when Paul died was Julia. She was not only in politics with me, she was a friend, and I was very proud to be a part of getting that center built in her name downtown. And I just hope that everything works out for Indigo, and we finish the green line and the purple line, and it keeps on flowing as it is doing right now. And I just thank everybody for their kind words. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, for your service, for your many years of service. We're very, very grateful. Counselors, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by nay. Motion carries. Ms. Jones, again, thank you for your years of service with us. Our next item on the agenda is proposal number 324, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Public... Sorry. The Rules and Public Policy Committee met on December 1st. All members in attendance either physically or participated electronically, with consent of the councilors. I'd like to take proposal number 324, 325, 326, 327, 328, and 329 together. Consent. So these proposals all appoint different people to the Indianapolis Commission. The Indianapolis Commission on African-American Males, all were voted on 11 to 0 with due pass recommendation. The people who are up for appointment are Judge Jeffrey Gaither, Representative Greg Porter, Marshawn Woolley, Tammy Butler Robinson, John Grease, and Kenneth Allen. I so move, Mr. President.
Second.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors?
Hold on, babe.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's Counsel Lewis.
Yes, please, proceed. Majority Leader.
I think someone needs to mute.
All right.
I just wanted to say, thank you again, Mr. President. I just wanted to say thank you to all of my colleagues who supported this proposal early in July. I think we have pulled together an amazing group of individuals to lead this work in our community. Also, I think it's important that we know that there will be other opportunities for community leaders and stakeholders to join in the work, as the group will create an advisory group as well. So again, I'm very pleased at the group that will be representing the commission, and I just want to thank my colleagues for supporting this effort.
Very good. Thank you, Majority Leader. Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo the sentiments, Majority Leader Lewis. Mr. President, thank you for this opportunity. Madam Majority Leader, thank you for the opportunity and for allowing me to be a co-sponsor. I said this in committee, "To whom much is given, much is required." And I think we have an awesome group of leaders from state level all the way down who will represent this commission very well, and who will also extend an olive branch to those who will be on the advisory committee that will also represent those in the trenches in our communities, in the makeup of the diversity of this commission and advisory committee, both men and women alike. And so I'm very honored again to be a sponsor and have the opportunity to be a part of something I think would be very great, very eye-opening for our city, a chance for innovation, a chance for true change in an area that is much needed for Indianapolis, of a city of our size, and being on a leadership team of this council, having the opportunity to pave the way for others. Thank you again to my colleagues. Thank you for leadership. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Majority Leader, and thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Counselor Graves.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, echoing the sentiments of Madam Leader, as well as my peer, Chairwoman Jackson. A lot is expected from this commission, but this commission is built on some very passionate individuals from our community. They'll answer some of the longstanding questions that we've had regarding African-American males that are here in our city. Often, they'll find themselves on the wrong end of much of the data that we see. So my hope is that they will get to the answer to that and hopefully find the way to level that field and help those that need it to be put back on the path to success. So I'm very pleased to be supporting this. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Are there any additional comments or questions from council? Counselor Ane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was very pleased to listen to some of the folks who came before us with the resumes and things I was supporting of all of them. I don't have my notes in front of me. It seemed like in one of the committees, one of the individuals was absent, and we voted to postpone voting on them until the next. I just want to make sure that if that person's not in tonight's vote, I don't have the name with me.
Thank you, Counselor Ane. That would have been John Bryce, and unfortunately, we weren't able to vote on him on that evening. And I don't believe that he's present this evening with us.
So are we voting on him tonight, or are we waiting till the next committee here?
I'm sorry, Counselor Kim, would you respond?
Thank you, Mr. President. We won't be voting on proposal 328 tonight.
Thank you. So we've got no additional comments. Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call?
Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Ane.
Counselor Ane, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Cardino.
Counselor Cardino, aye.
Counselor Delk.
Counselor Delk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgary.
Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maori.
Aye.
Counselor Oliver. Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is 24-0.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 349, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. I believe it will be Majority Leader Lewis, but in case I am wrong, then it will be Chairwoman Jackson.
Chairwoman Jackson.
Yeah. Can she send me a bill through PayPal?
Um, Chairwoman, uh, Jackson, uh, you are, you are not muted.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
It's okay. We are, um, at proposal number three forty-nine.
Yes, sir. Proposal three forty-nine appoints Amanda Anderson to the Indianapolis Historic Preservation Committee. Ms. Anderson was present to answer questions and stated that she was born and raised in Indianapolis and enjoys, keeping up with the city and wants to provide diversity in another perspective in the IHPC. The proposal passed out of committee by votes of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Alright, the motion's been properly moved and taken. Are there any comments from counselors? Counselor Adamson, Vice President. And you're muted.
Sorry. I just wanted to, uh, to recognize the, um, the person who has vacated the seat, Sally Cook, who is a, a District Seventeen resident who has served with such distinction for so many years that she will be missed. Uh, she is still excited to, to, uh, to see diversity on our, our Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, and, uh, she'll be, I'm sure, still engaged as she herself lives in historic with her place. Uh, so I'm excited to see, uh, Ms. Anderson join this, uh, esteemed organization. So, with the force of supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Are there any additional comments from counselors? Alright, seeing none. Madam Clerk, um, we will now proceed for a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Ane.
Counselor Ane, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Dill, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgary.
Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury. Counselor Maury. Counselor Oliver. Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Counselor Maury. Counselor Oliver. Mr. President, that is twenty-three zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the next item on our agenda is proposal number three fifty. Uh, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Masgary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal three fifty was heard on, uh, November seventeenth. Appoints Tanya Nijah to the City County Audit Committee. And it passed with a two-pass record of eleven oh. I so move.
Second.
Uh, motion's been properly moved and taken. Are there any comments from counselors? Alright, seeing none. Um, Madam Clerk, we'll proceed to roll call for our votes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Ane.
Counselor Ane, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Dill, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Hart. I'm sorry, Counselor Gray.
Forget me again, huh? Counselor Gray, okay. Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's right. Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgary.
Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Aye.
Counselor Oliver. Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts. Counselor Potts. Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Counselor Potts. Mr. President, that is twenty-three zero.
Alright, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three five one, introduced by Counselor Osley, referred to the committee, to the committee of the whole, modifies the holiday schedule for city-county employees, reduces the amount of benefit leave for, benefit, benefit leave some city-county employees may carry over from year to year, reduces the amount of benefit leave that will be paid to employees upon separation, and makes other changes to personnel ordinance. Proposal numbers three fifty-two through three fifty-three, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number three fifty-two, introduced by Counselor Lewis, approves the mayor's appointment of Scarlett Andrews Martin as the Director of the Department of Metropolitan Development. Proposal number three fifty-three, introduced by Counsel Robinson, approves the state of benefits for Aliday WCP, or WCP, I believe the seventh Land LLC, as an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal number three sixty-one, introduced by Counsel Robinson, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, amends Chapter two hundred-two, Article eight of the Code regarding the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Proposal numbers three sixty-three through three sixty-six, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee and were introduced by Counselor Osley. Proposal number three sixty-three, reappoints Myla Eldridge to the Information Technology Board. Proposal number three sixty-four, appoints Julie Voorhees to the, to the Information Technology Board. Proposal number three sixty-five, reappoints Sheriff Kerry Forrestal to, to the Information Technology Board. And proposal three sixty-six, reappoint Holly Harrington to the Information Technology Board. Proposal numbers three sixty-seven and three sixty-eight, referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee and were introduced by Counselor Osley. Proposal number three sixty-seven, reappoints Karen Celestino Horstman to the Animal Care Services Board. Proposal number three sixty-eight, reappoint, excuse me, reappoint Stacy Hurley, excuse me, to the Animal Care Advisory Board. Proposal number three sixty-nine, introduced by Counselor Osley, referred to the Community Affairs Committee, reappoints Amy Carroll to the Public Art for Neighborhood Selection Committee. Proposal number three seventy, introduced by Counselor Osley, referred to the Metropolitan, I'm sorry, the Municipal Corporations Committee, appoints Tasha Powell to the Speedway Public Library Board. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the next item on our agenda is Special Orders, Privatey Business. Proposal numbers, uh, three fifty-seven through three fifty-nine, twenty twenty, and proposal number three sixty, twenty twenty, are all rezoning ordinances certified, uh, for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. If anyone wishes to call down any of these proposals, I mean, any of these rezonings for public hearing, it will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the rezonings? Alright, seeing no one. Proposal numbers three fifty-seven through three fifty-nine, twenty twenty, and proposal number three sixty, twenty twenty, will pass into law. Uh, the next item on our agenda is Special Orders, Public Hearing. And, um, that is proposal number three oh seven, referred to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Masgary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have an amendment. Should we do the amendment first or should I do, uh, read the proposal?
Um, you can read the proposal and then we should, um, uh, do the amendment.
Alright, tha- thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you. On November seventh, uh, Admin and Finance met and, um, we approved a transfer of appropriations of totally nineteen million, seven hundred, nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars to the two thousand twenty budget of various, various city-county departments, agencies, various city-county funds, consisting of transfers and existing appropriations in the amount of seventeen thou, two, seventeen million, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and five hundred and fifty-eight dollars among the characters, uh, property reflecting expenditures and additional two million, one hundred and nineteen, nine hundred and fifteen dollars in federal and local grant awards, not previously appropriated. It passed out of committee eleven oh. Uh, we do have one, um, small amendment. It's in Section Six of the Marion County Corrections, requested an additional appropriation totaling eight hundred and forty thi, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in state grant in Character One, funding the Indiana State Department, transfer appropriations of twenty thousand dollars from Character Two and Three to Character Four. I so move.
Second.
Uh, the motion to amend has been properly moved and taken. Are there comments from counselors? Alright, seeing none. Uh, we will proceed to roll call for a vote on the amendment. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Ane.
Counselor Ane, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
One, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Dill, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor, Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Mr. Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgary.
Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver. Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts. Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Oliver. Mr. President, that is twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, Madam Clerk, were there any public comments received online?
No, there were no public comments.
Alright, very good. Uh, we'll check and see if there are any public comments from those in the chamber of the seat. Alright, seeing none. Is, is there a motion to adopt proposal number three, uh, zero seven, twenty twenty, as amended?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been properly moved and taken. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none. Um, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Ane.
Ane, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Dill, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans. Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves. Counselor Graves.
Counselor.
Counselor Graves, can I repeat your vote? You, Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgary.
Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver. Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the next item on our agenda is proposal number three zero eight, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Masgary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal three oh eight was heard November seventeenth, two thousand twenty. It approves an additional, uh, excuse me, approves additional appropriations of two hundred and nine million, excuse me, two hundred and nine million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars in the two thousand twenty budget of various city and county departments and agencies in various county and county funds. The company expenses associated with the coronavirus response is passed out of committee, uh, seven zero four. Four seen. I so move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. The motions are properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counsel Carlino.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I did in committee, I request to abstain from this vote tonight.
Thank you. Additional comments from councilors? All right, very good. Seeing none. Um, Madam Clerk, were there any public comments received online?
No, there were no public comments.
Thank you. Um, are there any public comments from those here in the chamber? All right, seeing then, um, we'll now proceed, uh, to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Counsel Adamson.
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay.
Anay, aye.
Counsel Bane.
Thank you. As before and as in committee, I abstain from this.
Thank you. Counsel Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots.
Boots abstains as well for similar reasons.
Thank you. Counsel Brown.
Brown, aye.
Thank you. Counsel Carlino abstained. Counsel Dilk.
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans.
Uh, Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans. Counsel Ja- Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray.
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart.
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson abstains for similar reasons.
Thank you. Counsel Jones.
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis.
I apologize. Mr. President, permission to abstain.
Thank you, Madam Attorney Leader. Yes.
Counsel Masqueri. Counsel Masqueri.
Counselor Masqueri, aye.
Thank you. Counsel McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury.
Aye.
Counsel Oliver. Counsel Osley.
Counsel Osley, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray.
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That would be nineteen aye, zero nay, and five abstentions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the next item on our agenda is proposal number three zero nine referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Masqueri.
Uh, Mr. President, I think that was, went to Metropolitan Development. Three oh nine?
Yes, it is. And I want to say, uh, Chairwoman, uh, Jackson, please.
I'm ready this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proposal number three oh nine twenty-twenty approves the twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget of the Greater Virginia Avenue Corridor Economic Improvement District. Mike Hossstad, co-chair Greater Virginia Avenue Corridor Economic Improvement Board of Directors stated that the board has created almost three years ago and has nine members on the board. He added that they have monthly neighborhood cleanups and work within the community. The proposal passed out a commu- committee by votes of twelve to zero. Mr. President, I so, not so move.
Second.
Uh, the motions are properly moved and, and seconded. Are there any comments from, uh, from councilors? All right, seeing then, um, Madam Clerk, were there any public comments received online?
There were no public comments.
All right, thank you. Are there any public comments from those in the chamber? All right, seeing then, um, Madam Clerk, we'll proceed to the roll call for our vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson.
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay.
Anay, aye.
Counsel Bane.
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counsel Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino.
Carlino, aye.
Counsel Dilk.
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans.
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans. Counsel Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray.
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart.
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Jones.
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis.
Counsel Lewis, aye.
Counsel Masqueri.
Masqueri, aye.
Counsel McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury.
Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver. Counsel Osley.
Counsel Osley, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray.
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is twenty-four zero.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the next item on our agenda is proposal number three, uh, ten referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairman Jackson.
Proposal number three, thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three twen- ten twenty-twenty approves the two thousand twenty-one budget of the Woodbridge Place Economic Improvement District. Will Pritchard, Chair Woodr- Woodbridge Place Economic Improvement Board of Directors stated that the board was created almost six years ago and they have spent forty-eight thousand dollars in renovations. He added that they have spent all the money raising importance to the rules and regulations. The proposal passed out of committee by the votes of twelve to zero. And, Mr. President, I so.
Second.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing then, um, Madam Clerk, are there any public comments online?
No, there are no public comments.
Thank you. Are there any public comments from those in the chamber? Very good. Uh, Madam Clerk, um, let us proceed now, uh, to a roll call for the vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson.
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay.
Anay, aye.
Counsel Bane.
Counsel Bane, aye.
Counsel Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino.
Counsel Carlino, aye.
Counsel Dilk.
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans. Counsel Ethan Evans.
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans. Counsel Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray.
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart.
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Jones.
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis.
Counsel Lewis, aye.
Counsel Masqueri.
Masqueri, aye.
Counsel McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury.
Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver. Counsel Osley. Counsel Osley.
Counsel Osley, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray.
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the next item on our agenda is proposal number three one five. I refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our, um, co-chair Counsel Carlino will be leading the discussion today with these minutes, Mr. President, respectfully.
Counsel Carlino, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Chairman. Proposal number three fifteen approves an additional appropriation of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the twenty-twenty budget of the Marion County Coroner County General Fund to fund additional supply and contractual needs, specifically pathology and transportation. Deputy Chief Coroner Alfie McGinty stated that they are requesting an additional appropriation in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in character two and an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in character three for a total of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from various funds. Ms. McGinty said that their office has seen an increase in cases and as of to date had seen an additional five hundred and fifty-two cases over last year. Counselor Boots moved, seconded by Counsel Robinson, to send proposal three fifteen twenty-twenty to the full council with a due past recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of thirteen to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, um, seeing then, uh, Madam Clerk, were there any public comments received online?
No, there were no public comments.
All right, uh, thank you. Are there any public comments from those in the chamber? All right, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, let us proceed then, uh, to a roll call for our vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson.
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay.
Counsel Anay, aye.
Counsel Bane.
Counsel Bane, aye.
Counsel Boots. I'm sorry, Counsel Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino.
Counsel Carlino, aye.
Counsel Dilk.
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans.
Ca- Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans. Counsel Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray.
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart.
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Jones.
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison.
Counsel Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis.
Counsel Lewis, aye.
Counsel Masqueri.
Counsel Masqueri, aye.
Counsel McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury.
Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver. Counsel Osley.
Counsel Osley, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray.
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, there is no business under Special Orders unfinished business. So the next item on our, uh, item on our agenda is Special Orders Final Adoption. Proposal number three fifty-one, uh, twenty-twenty, which modifies the holiday schedule uh, for city-county county, for city-county employees, uh, reduces the amount of benefit leave some city-county employees may carry over from year to year, reduces the amount of benefit, uh, leave that will be paid to employees upon, uh, separation and makes other changes to the, uh, to the personnel ordinance. Uh, was moved from, uh, first, from, from introductions, uh, for, uh, final adoption, uh, this evening. I believe that we have, uh, to speak on this, uh, this evening, um, Director of Human Resources, um, Ms. Madison. Ms. Madison, uh, welcome and, uh, good evening.
Good evening, President Osley, and thank you. Uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to share a PowerPoint presentation to just go over and briefly summarize the proposals that are before you tonight.
Yes, please.
Um, I don't seem to be able to share my screen. Oh, wait a minute. Okay, so the current proposal, on the, uh, left column, you have our current holiday schedule and then the proposed holiday schedule that we are asking to add Presidents' Day. There was a time that the city-county, uh, did celebrate Presidents' Day and so we are looking to re-add that to the calendar. Juneteenth Day observed in honor of the Juneteenth holiday that was, uh, uh, an executive order and an honor was, uh, declared by both the governor and the mayor of Indiana this year, uh, the mayor of Indianapolis and the governor of Indiana. Um, with regards to Good Friday, we are requesting that that day be turned into a floating holiday. And the reason for this is, uh, while we do have many employees who identify as Christian and enjoy the flexibility to be able to celebrate that day in our, uh, Christian calendar, we do also have other faiths and, uh, religions in our city-county employee population and this would also allow them the flexibility to be able to have that holiday, uh, when they so chose. We would also be looking to add Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, this would be in October and it is, uh, uh, some observances are with Columbus Day, we propose that this be an Indigenous Peoples' celebration of a holiday. And then the three half-days that we are requesting to be added as part of the holiday ordinance would be to codify what is typically given as an authorized closure by many of the elected officials consistently each year. And, um, administratively, usually employees are asking the question whether or not there is going to be a half-day on those days. And, uh, business is significantly reduced during those periods of time and so we are asking to add those days as half-days. Now, as I, uh, briefly mentioned, the rationale for these holiday changes is to celebrate and honor the cultural uh, and ethnic and religious diversity of the Indianapolis and Marion County community as well as our employees. And this new holiday proposed, uh, schedule would also more closely align with the court's holiday calendar and we believe that this would reduce service and access confusion for our residents and community members that, uh, are, uh, seeking services on those days in the city-county building. Now, and in addition to the holiday leave, we are also requesting some modifications to our benefit leave ordinance. The first being that benefit leave be able to be accrued for employees who are working at least one thousand, three hundred and twenty hours per year. The second request is to reduce the annual carryover hour days by two days. So currently, our employees can carry over four weeks and two days. That's one hundred and seventy-six hours for our city employees who work forty hours a week and one hundred and sixty-five hours for our county employees who work thirty-seven and a half hours per week. And so we are requesting to reduce the number of carryover days by two days and so it would be one hundred and sixty hours carried over and one hundred and fifty hours carried over depending on which city, whether you're a city employee or a county employee. In addition to reducing the annual carryover hours, we are also requesting that we incrementally introduce a reduction in the maximum in the maximum payout for benefit leave for employees. So currently, there is no limitation other than the carryover hours and then the hours earned during an annual year. But given the number of employees who may be serving for a very long time and accruing hours at a much higher rate, that benefit leave payout can be quite substantial and represents a liability to the city and county. And so we are requesting that our program be modeled a little bit more similarly to the state's program, which is an introduction in two-thousand-and-twenty-one of a maximum ten-week payout, and then the next year reduce that by two more weeks for a maximum of an eight-week payout. And then finally, from two-zero-twenty-three moving forward, employees can receive no more than six weeks of their benefit leave being paid out when they separate from employment from the city-county. And then finally, we're also asking that the current ordinance that is named death leave be changed to be named bereavement leave and that we increase those days from three days to five days. Excuse me, the rationale for the benefit leave changes, as I've mentioned, is reducing the carryover hours. This reflects the increase in the holidays if passed by council to reduce the number of benefit leave carryover days to reduce the financial liability for the city of Indianapolis and Marion County, and then, as I mentioned, align more closely to state government and benefit leave. With regards to benefit leave overall, we certainly will be taking a look at this as we are moving forward with our assessment. And ultimately, we'll be getting a proposal before council about how we look at the total compensation package of our employees. So I just want to make note that the requested changes are beginning the incremental steps of that total compensation review that we are currently looking at for our city and county employees. And then the final proposal before you tonight is with regards to the residency requirements. Currently, interns are not provided a provided exception for residency, which means that their permanent full-time residence needs to be in the greater Indianapolis Marion County area. And so the rationale for this request is to be able to provide a greater pool of candidates to recruit both summer and semester internships. We're hoping that this is going to also address a lot of our diversity efforts that we are in the process of making much more intentional efforts to diversify our candidate pools, and we also want that to include interns so that we have potentially a pipeline for them to return long-term to Indianapolis and Marion County. And so as we look at HBCUs are historically black colleges and universities, or HSIs are Hispanic-serving institutions. We hope that this might be able to provide a recruitment pipeline for interns that may be interested in local government positions here in Indianapolis and Marion County. And so that is a general overview of the proposals before you tonight, and I would be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Maury?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for my understanding here, so we're making Good Friday a floating holiday, is that correct? Because we have people with other religious beliefs, correct?
Well, just for clarification, Good Friday is still a day that can be taken as a holiday. So I don't want anyone to be confused by that. We certainly can still take Good Friday as a holiday. It just provides flexibility by having it a floating holiday for anyone else who may have a different holiday that they wish to celebrate that they can utilize that day there.
So then I guess my question for that then is, and I'm just trying to make sure on an even playing ground, equal playing ground, we're all on the same page here. Can you can you help me differentiate how then Juneteenth would be a different from a Good Friday if if we're looking at holidays that maybe not everyone celebrates because of maybe religious beliefs, ethnicities, et cetera, just so I can understand how some of these things happen, like I saw, I think, what was it, Thanksgiving Eve as well. I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my mind around taking more and more days off, so I'm if you could help me understand that, I really appreciate it. I'm just asking from an understanding standpoint. Thank you.
I'll try and answer your question as best I can. Please let me know, Counselor, if I I have not accomplished that. But as I understood your question to be why adding Juneteenth and Indigenous people as days that we have not historically celebrated from a local government perspective that provides the holidays, and I
I guess why would that not be like a floating holiday then? I guess I'm trying to understand.
So why would Juneteenth or Indigenous Peoples' Day not be a floating holiday as opposed to Good Friday? That's always been a traditional holiday.
Yeah, I would think if we're gonna make Good Friday a floating holiday, on the same playing field, level ground. I'm just trying to understand why one is a floating holiday and one is now a regular day off.
Well, I think probably the the best way I know how to answer that question is more and more local governments, but also businesses are moving Good Friday to a floating holiday as they have found that their business has not necessarily slowed down as much, and their employees may not value that day as much as they had before. I think that we still need to make sure that we provide space to honor from a religious perspective our employees who want to celebrate that. Now, that's one piece with regards to Good Friday. With regards to our celebration or recommended celebration to honor Juneteenth, that is with, I think, in a similar vein of our celebration of Independence Day. And the reason why this is so important is because historically, we have not, as I think a lot of local discussions, consistently been educated as a community about Juneteenth. And so this provides additional opportunity for the education of Juneteenth, which certainly has been made more and more in the news, I think, as more people have become aware who had not previously become aware of the very important celebration of the enslaved people in Texas being the last ones to find out of the Emancipation Proclamation. So I think in terms of honoring freedom, Juneteenth is an important way to do that, not only for our country, but for our community. And then with regards to
Yeah, I think that's great. I think it's good for trying to educate people on what exactly Juneteenth is and be able to use that as an educational piece. How do you plan on going about making that an educational piece if it's a day off?
I'm not sure in terms of how the city-county or the city plans to educate the city in general about Juneteenth?
Yeah, I mean, I would love to be able to get on board and try to help out, you know, with the educational piece of it to be able to give people more of an understanding of what exactly Juneteenth is and be able to help out with making that education more widespread. So I'm just curious how we can, how we're gonna do that with having the day off, how we're gonna make it a more educational piece. And I, like I said, I support this. I just want to, I just want to know how we're gonna make it a more educational piece.
I would very much like to follow up in conversation with you about that, about how we might be able to do that.
All right. Thank you, Director Madison. I think we have a question also from Counsel McCormick.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, I guess, it's more of a comment than a question. I think I'm supportive of the new, the new calendar, as well as the interns working with college students. I think that being able to get that diverse representation, even of students who attend universities here in the county but don't reside from our county and live from other states, this is a great opportunity to keep them here in our county. Love that. And as far as the holiday addition, you know, from my, my work and other colleagues that I know, our businesses have changed their models of their calendars and added holidays and changed holidays as well. And I think a lot of them are trying to follow keeping everything equal and just looking at the differences in religions that we have in our communities that, you know, the Good Friday is being a floating holiday, so we can use that for, you know, Rosh Hashanah or Yom Kippur Hanukkah or Kwanzaa or any other day that our religion celebrates that, that maybe isn't what we have been used to in the norm. And so I think that that diversity option is great for our community as well.
Thank you, Counsel McCormick. Counselor Jared Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to comment real quick. I was somewhat alarmed, I guess, at some of the questions that I heard my colleague just post a moment ago and damn near borderline what sounded like racism or prejudice to me. Juneteenth should be a day that we celebrate in this country, just like we do July Fourth, for the past mistakes that we made and we own up to. And it should be a holiday we should have been celebrating years and decades ago. There shouldn't even be a discussion about it. So I'm a little bit appalled about that line of comments and questions. And just to understand Good Friday is, Ms. Renee, if I understand it correctly, if I'm a Catholic or Christian that celebrates Good Friday, I can take that day off. If I'm an atheist or someone else and I don't celebrate those, I can use that day a different day or use it for a different holiday that I do celebrate? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Evans. Counsel Ethan Evans?
Thank you, President Osley, and I appreciate the changes made in the holiday schedule. Now, as the only Jewish counselor right now, I have experienced some dismay in the past as a former employee, not being able to take paid holidays off for Rosh Hashanah, as you said, and Yom Kippur. So it is, you know, mining to see the ability, you know, we or others, other religious groups being able to take that option right now. So for me and others, it is hopeful, it is frightening to see that happen. So I'm thankful, and I talked earlier about the schedule changes, and you know, it's just something that people don't often think about or didn't think about in the past, but, you know, it's good to have that opportunity. So thank you.
Counselor Larison?
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Madison, I just wanted to say that as someone who formerly worked for the city, I think the changes that you're proposing make sense. I especially want to thank you on the changes, the proposed changes with regards to interns. I know in the past that when I worked for the city, that was sometimes a challenge, especially for local college students who weren't necessarily Indianapolis residents, and I think it'll be a great opportunity for the enterprise to collect some smart individuals to work with us if, just for a little bit, with the hopes of maybe enticing them to stay around in Indianapolis. I'm also a fan of the changes to the holiday schedule and provide my wholehearted support behind it. Thank you.
I thank Counsel Larison. Counsel Boots?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question, clarification question, if I may, Director Madison. The issues of the new, what appear to be the half-days, Thanksgiving Eve, Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve. So those now are gonna be recognized half-days. And if that happens to fall on, say, a weekend, is that going to be made up elsewhere? Because that is now a recognized block of vacation time or holiday time?
Generally speaking, if the holiday falls on a weekend, then yes, it is observed during the course of the week.
Okay. Thank you. If I may, Mr. President, permission to understand you due to my wife working for the county.
All right. Thank you very much, Counsel Boots. Counsel Renee?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of questions, and these questions aren't meant to show my approval or disapproval of this, just merely a question as a freshman counselor. When you look at changing holidays or adding in things, is that a pretty standard procedure? Is that something that maybe councils see every couple of years, or is this more of a, I want to say unprecedented, but more unusual move, Counsel or Director Madison?
Pardon me, Counselor, but I would have to look at our revisions for the last time that there were changes made to the holiday calendar. My understanding is that it does not occur very often. I'm not sure if my colleague Ellen Gabovich might know the answer to that question.
Hi, I'm Ellen Gabovich from the Office of Corporation Counsel, and I've been working with Director Madison on this proposal. I would agree it's not a frequent occurrence, but just, just maybe within the last five five years, the council did make some changes. We brought forth a proposal, and the council made some changes to add Veterans' Day, to remove Presidents' Day, to add Christmas Eve Day. So it's not unprecedented. It's not a frequent occurrence, I would say. Thank you very much. I just was kind of curious as we kind of ponder this, you know, how frequent or infrequent these types of changes are, and if they are relatively infrequent, I think it'd be more helpful to be able to take a look at past changes and, and the timelines and what was changed and what was added and things like that, just to give a more appropriate context and not kind of rush. And I'm not saying I'm not against adding certain holidays or opposed to floating certain holidays, but just a better understanding of the process before we vote on it. Director Madison, a question I have with regard to the interns. I'm supportive of giving a wider pool of folks the opportunity to join. But I was hoping that maybe we could take a look in the future of trying to have a percentage of folks you know, limited to living outside of Marion County, so we can at least assure that, you know, half or thirty-five percent or a percentage of folks are, you know, required to be a part of Marion County, so we're not replacing all of our residents, right, in some respects, but also giving folks outside of the county, maybe who are visiting through university, to participate as well. So just a thought on that.
Good, Counsel Bain?
Thank you, Mr. President and Director Madison. I fully support making Juneteenth a holiday, and along said, I think that should be a federal holiday as well. And I definitely see where you're coming from on Good Friday being a floating holiday for all the different religions that we have in Indianapolis. But one thing I am struggling with and we're struggling with how to vote on this proposal is that at a time when so many businesses are struggling and government is here adding days off for government employees. And that's a tough one for me. I don't know how we rectify that, how we justify it. So I don't know if you have a comment on that, but I'd appreciate it.
Thank you for that question. Thank you for that question. I think my comment would be that we still are within the general range of holidays for both governments and private businesses. And while I do appreciate the sentiment, especially, and, and not just the sentiment, the sense of responsibility for being good stewards of our community, we also think that this is helpful to reduce confusion, because the courts are closed on these same days as well. And so I think being able to align city-county resources is actually going to be helpful to our, our residents of Indianapolis and Marion County. So those would be the, the two responses that I would have. One, it's, it's, it's not a larger number than the average holidays, which range between 10 to 15 days, and then the, the alignment with the court's calendar as well.
I can just make a quick comment and respond to that, Mr. President. You know, I, I don't know how people get thrown off by the courts being closed on some days and other branches of government being open. I'm just more concerned with the optics of this right now and the fact that we have businesses closing in our city every day, and the fact that it looks like government is here adding days off. And part of me doesn't even think this should be stuff that we legislate. I don't know why we don't just leave this up to the each branch of government to figure out what they want to do. But this is one that I'm struggling with.
Any additional comments or questions? Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had to ask your permission for a short dialogue with Ms. Madison. Very short, very short, I promise. So my, you were muted, but I could tell you, it looks like you were saying just to be short, and I, I promise I will. My, my first question, Ms. Madison, is how many sick days do employees receive?
I'm, I'm pausing because I have a few different answers for you. We have employees who are grandfathered in, who still have sick days that remain once we abolish the six-day program. However, in 2020, with the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, we expanded our leave and compliance with the FFCRA to include emergency leave, which is used as sick leave or for childcare under the FFCRA, and, and/or for taking care of somebody in your household. So currently, all employees during 2020 have two weeks of leave that is not generally accounted for. Now, that is due to expire in December 31, unless additional congressional legislation occurs.
And on a standard year?
I, I'm sorry?
On a standard year, what would they typically have for a?
On a standard year, they have no sick leave.
So everything is reliant on, okay, how about PTO days, paid time off days?
Right. So those are classified as our benefit leave days. And that is accrued depending on your years of service with the city-county. And so under five years, you accrue at a certain amount, and then five to 10, 10 to 15. The longer your service with the city-county, the greater your accrual.
So for the, the purpose of this conversation, I'll assume that we have an employee who's 10 years, less than five years. How many paid time off days do they have?
If you could give me one moment for a quick calculation so that I can give you a precise answer. 21.99 days.
So I'm, I have less than five years. I have 21 days, PTO, paid time off. And with this, and I'll, I'll let go the 2020 days for COVID. So traditionally, we have 21 days for less than five years, and we're about to add, but we're going to go from 11 to 16 and a half additional days. So I've worked in the private sector. I've never worked in the public sector, other than being a counselor here, and, and I don't get paid time off for doing this job. This job takes a lot of time, and I meet with constituents at all times of hours and take phone calls at all types of days. But in my, my private sector work, I've never once been granted 21 days for PTO. I've never been granted 16 and a half days for holidays. On average, it's, it's generally half than that. And I could imagine that most people are pretty equivalent to that, especially the ones who are, who are paying taxes. And, and just like, you know, to echo Counselor Bane here, the people who are, who are paying their taxes are working and not getting half of the amount of the days that we are proposing here. You know, and, and with respect to, you know, Juneteenth, I, I agree, that should be a date. You know, it has no, my comments have no consolation to that day specifically, right? When I look at these half-days such as Eve-Eves, now we're pushing it, right? That's, that's a little obtuse for my liking, that we, we don't need to go down that route. Most people are working on that days. When I get to the floating holidays piece, I'm really concerned why we, as a city government, are picking and choosing what days are observed. And why didn't the train of thought go through our, our leadership to say, why don't we allow for multiple floating holidays to choose between which days we want to allow off for what we, as employees of city government, perceive to be important to us? Whether they be Good Friday, Christmas Eve-Eve, Indigenous People's Day. Why did we only allow one floating holiday and not multiple floating holidays to allow our employees to choose what days they perceive important to them? Ms. Madison, if you could briefly answer that.
I'm sorry, Counselor Hart, I understood you be, understood you to be making comments on the council proposals. So if you would not mind rephrasing your question, and I will try and answer it as best I can.
I'm happy to rephrase it. So why are we, as a city, determining what days our employees observe as holidays, opposed to allowing for more floating days when concerning days such as Indigenous People's Days or Good Fridays? Why don't we let them observe the days that they consider holidays, and we just call them a floating holiday and allow a, a limited version of those days?
Yes, I think the goal was to allow for the flexibility and also understand the expectation of the business that needs to be performed. And so only allowing for one floating holiday is the rationale for that, as opposed to the three floating holidays, or as I hear you to be suggesting.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah. And, and thank you, Counselor Hart. Thank you, Director Madison. Counselor McCormick.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. I just, I guess I have a comment in relation to Counselor Hart. So when most companies or most places switch from a vacation and a sick time to a PTO, they incorporate their, their sick time and vacation together. So while almost 22 days, right, 21.9 days earned isn't a lot, most, most employers will give a two-week vacation and a week of sick time or some combination of that. And so this is actually equalling out to about the same. And from what I remember in the presentation, we're giving two extra holidays, not counting the half-days, but two extra holidays, but we're limiting the amount that they can roll over. And forced holidays are actually more times that employees will take off versus vacation or PTO. A lot, a number of employees will let that expire, because they don't actually, especially in a city with what we've had this year, how many people are actually taking the time off that they've earned? So as an employee, they're earning 21.9 hours, but how many are actually rolling over and losing, going to start losing hours? And so I think forcing the holiday is better than almost giving that vacation day just so we can ensure that they're taking that time off for their mental, their physical, and their emotional health, versus having that time where they're, just feel like they're in crunch all the time, because they're taking on all these responsibilities and not be able to use that time. I personally have been in that. I know a lot of people who have been in that area. And I think getting people their vacation that they've earned is important.
Thank you, Counselor McCormick. Appreciate that very much. Just, Mr. Controll, Mr. Controll, Clark, did you have any comments you wanted to add to this?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. I hear the counselors, I hear some of the concerns and some of the thoughts on the proposal. I just want to note, there is a significant difference between Juneteenth and Indigenous Peoples' Day versus Good Friday. And while I have nothing against Good Friday, as a good Southern Indiana Catholic, celebrate it very rarely, of course, it's a day I can still take off. And I want my colleagues to be able to take the days off that are related to their religious holidays. As it relates to Juneteenth and Indigenous Peoples' Day, I'll say that I see those as celebrating the diversity of our community and very specifically allowing our employees that chance. The other important piece of this, as I think Renee noted, the compensation package for the city is not as financially valuable as our private sector partners. That is a part of it, and I understand that. And so I just take that into account when we look at the whole compensation package, which is what our HR Director Renee Madison has been doing with me and my team as we look at how do we address these, especially these next two years of very limited budgets. The city-county employees are not receiving pay increases next year, likely will not receive them in 2022. And it's, it is a tough time, there's no doubt, for the city and for the city employees. We are set on protecting their jobs and keeping those jobs, but the proposal was intended in that framework. So I just want, I just want to be able to clarify that. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I believe Chair Maschary had a comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to call a question, please.
All right. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay.
All right, very good. There's no debate on this, Madam Clerk. Would you take a roll call, please?
Yes, President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Bane.
Counselor Bane, nay.
Counselor, aye, nay, I'm sorry.
Counselor, aye, just quickly, there are a lot of things I like about this, including some additional holidays, but I just have some more questions, and I wish this would have gone through the committee. And I think if it would have gone through the committee, I would have been an aye, but tonight I have to be a nay.
Thank you. Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots abstains. Did you hear me? I'm sorry.
I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, nay.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Mr. President, this is one of those I'm going to vote yes for. But this is one of those type proposals that would have done us better good by going through committee, because we haven't really had a good time to vet all this out. And to receive it today and vote on it today, that's a little much. But knowing that the urgency of it, I will vote yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, nay.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larsson.
Counselor Larsson, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Maschary.
Counselor Maschary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, yes.
Counselor Mallory.
Counselor Mallory, I would like to echo my sentiments from Counselor Gray in saying, you know, I wish this really could, and aye as well, in saying I wish I could, this could have gone through the committee to have a real good hearing on it, and we could have ironed a lot of this out in committee. But I will be voting nay on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Oliver. Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have 18 aye, four, no, five nay, and one abstention.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So now I will ask for a motion to adopt proposal number 351, 2020.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right. And thank you. It's improperly moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call for us?
Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor, aye, nay.
So the last vote was just to call a question?
That's correct.
Nay.
Counselor Bane.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, just very briefly, if this were just a vote on Juneteenth and Indigenous Peoples' Day, making Good Friday into a floating holiday, I, I, that's on that. But I just think now is the wrong time to send this message to the business community that government is going to be taking more time off while your businesses struggle to survive right now. It's on the nay.
Counselor.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots abstains. Counselor Brown.
Aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, nay.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans. Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, nay.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larsson.
Counselor Larsson, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Maschary.
Counselor Maschary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Mallory.
Counselor Mallory, you know, I think this is why we have the committee process to iron these things out. Committee here, and we could have got a lot more people on board with this, but unfortunately, tonight I'll be in.
Counselor Oliver. Counselor Osley.
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have 18 aye, five nay, and one abstention.
All right. And thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And then I'd like to run an agenda for proposal number 311. I refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three eleven, twenty twenty approves expenditures from the Community Revitalization Enhancement District, industrial development funding total four hundred and sixty-four, uh, I think that's thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars for the use of, use within the Lafayette Square Community Revitalization Enhancement District, AKA International Marketplace. Ryan Hunt, Principal Program Manager, Department Metropolitan Development, DND, and Mary Clark, Executive Director, International Marketplace Coalition gave a PowerPoint presentation making the following key points. One million dollars to improve Thirty-Eighth and Commercial Drive and Thirty-Eighth and Mola Road, intersection for vehicle traffic, and to make it more pedestrian friendly, small loan was provided, and property improvement grants totaling two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. COVID-nineteen funds of one hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five thousand will be utilized as a matching grant to help property owners expand outdoor dining for their restaurants. Total cost for the global village will be seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. The proposal passed out of committee by votes twelve to zero, and Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Uh, thank you. The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors. Seeing done, um, Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call?
My apologies. Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson.
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Ane.
Counsel Ane, aye.
Counsel Bane.
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counsel Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown. Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counsel Dill.
Counsel Dill, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans.
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray.
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart.
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Jones.
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison.
Counsel Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counsel Masqueri.
Masqueri, aye.
Counsel McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maori.
Maori, aye.
Counsel Oliver. Counsel Osley.
Counsel Osley, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray.
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three twelve, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three twelve, twenty twenty approves the statement of benefits on Novartis Manufacturing LLC Advanced Accelerator Applications, an applicant for tax abatement located in the economic revitalization area. Ryan Hunt, Principal Program Manager, Department Metropolitan Development, DMD, Stefani O Piantani, Head of Finance Advanced Accelerator Applications, AAA International, Mike Rossi, General Manager, AAA USA, and Kevin Hale, Project Leader in the site, Inc., gave a PowerPoint presentation making the following key points. It's located in Decatur Township as a ten-year real estate and personal property tax abatement, two manufacturing sites within the U.S., drugs must be used within seventy-two hours. Novartis has a hundred and twenty thousand employees. Uh, new sites will have twenty-six new high-level positions. The abatement is six point five million. Tax revenue for the city with, with the abatement will be just under six million. Mr. Rossi stated that the drug will be in doses and the price will vary depending on the access of the patients, adding that radio pharmaceuticals have low radioactivity and the facilities contain and shield radioactivity and everything is automated. Mr. Rossi stated that they plan on using the FedEx Hazardous Distribution Hub and also has a primary distribution. The proposal passed out of committee by votes eleven to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? Uh, Counsel Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, uh, a few remarks as a co-sponsor of this proposal with Counsel Bane as well. Um, very excited to, uh, co-sponsor this proposal. This land currently is undeveloped. Um, it generates a few thousand dollars for the city of Indianapolis. The tax abatements, we're still generating, I think around five or six million dollars throughout that ten-year period. So you can see the, uh, the benefit to having it. The airport TIF is gonna be expiring here in just a couple of years. So this is gonna be money that's gonna go directly to our schools, to our local fire department in Decatur Township, as well as to the trustee office, which, uh, funds the Port relief fund. So I'm very happy to co-sponsor this. I, I encourage my counselors, colleagues to support this as well. It's a very good use of, uh, public incentive for good development. Thank you.
Um, Counsel Jackson. Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you. I do remember, uh, asking a couple of questions. I like the fact that, um, the high-level executives, there'll be a few that will be living, uh, in Marion County because they have to live within close proximity unless there is, uh, to the plant, unless there's an issue for protocol reasons. That was one I liked. And Counsel Evans, if you can correct me or give us a statement, the average, uh, paying wage is it thirty-six, thirty-nine dollars an hour somewhere?
Well, I, I think they, there were two, two numbers. Um, the one that's in the documents is, uh, fifty-three dollars, I believe, but then in, uh, committee, they did state thirty-something. So I'm not sure if that was removing the, uh, executive piece, um, on that. But nonetheless, these are high, good-paying jobs.
Thank you for that. And so that's something I know myself, and I always call on my colleague, Mr. VP Adamson. There's certain things we look at and others in the due proposals, but I know we too definitely are on those things for, uh, lower wage and high-paying wage and those things. So these are things that I did, uh, vet and look at in a proposal, where the CEOs, the executives are at, and then what are they bringing to the table as far as, uh, the, the wage pays to the employees. So, um, I'm, I'm kinda, uh, glad about what this proposal brings to the city and the county. Thank you.
Counsel Bane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna echo the words, words of Counselor Evans. This is a great investment in our community, even with the tax abatement. Uh, we're gonna see such an influx of cash in the township government even to help our schools, our fire department, the port relief services. These are great, high-paying, high-school jobs for our community and just look forward to seeing what they do even as they expand beyond just this one development.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel Graves.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a quick question. Um, did Novartis, um, uh, promise to, uh, use our talent pool here in Marion County, Indianapolis, or were they gonna bring their, uh, employees for those great jobs from outside? Someone from the committee, perhaps?
Mr. President, did you want me to credit this?
Uh, Jared Evans.
Yeah, so, um, they're in the beginning stages of this, there's going to be roughly thirty jobs created. I think it was twenty-six jobs created. Um, obviously, they, they're, they're, they're dedicated to trying to hire out of the Marion County workforce. Um, so those jobs are being created locally. They're not bringing people in to Indianapolis or to Indiana, um, but they were not able to, um, commit to, you know, I, I think their commitment was, uh, forty percent of the jobs being from Marion County, and that's really just out of, they don't know where their workforce is gonna come from and based on who applies for those jobs. Um, this development is near Hendricks County, um, is near the, uh, other, I forget what that other county is down there, um, in that area. So it would be difficult for them to commit a hundred percent of the jobs to Indianapolis residents.
Uh, on, on this call, on this video call right now, we have, uh, Ryan Hunt and Scarlett Martin. Um, I don't know if they want to, uh, to weigh in. Uh, Mr. Hunt or Ms. Martin?
Uh, thank you, President Osley and members of the council. Uh, in addition to what was stated, I can also add that, um, uh, Novartis is developing an internship program at the facility and looking to partner with central, uh, Marion County Universities, uh, to implement that program. Uh, so that will be an additional way that, uh, people of the local community will get opportunities, uh, and exposure to the facility. Um, we are, we are in support of this. I'd be glad to hear any additional questions you have on the project.
Counsel Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is, what year does this go effect for the first year of abatement?
Uh, well, the, if I may, uh, President Osley.
Please go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Uh, yes, Counsel Hart. Uh, so the abatement, uh, under Indiana law, the tax abatement would trigger upon the reassessment of the new building or the installation of the equipment. Um, of course, the building will be completed first. Uh, they will plan to finish construction of the building by the end of next year. Um, so it could be assessed as early as twenty-twenty-two, but perhaps twenty-twenty-three is more realistic. Um, so it would start paying taxes in twenty-twenty, uh, four, and then that would be the first year of deduction. And from there, the, the taxes would increase, uh, each year of the abatement, the, the collections to the units.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. And just for the members of this council, the reason I ask that is just I've been taking a lot of attention to abatements here recently, considering our loss of, uh, tax revenue given to the detriment of COVID over the coming years. So we start to look at these and scrutinize these, not say this is bad by any means, but just to be a little bit more cognizant of, of what we as a city give away when, um, what effects are actually happening today because of COVID and, and trying to keep things running, you know, going through budget season, I saw a lot of things that were quite alarming, uh, primarily in the, the CIB. So, um, again, this, this is just an opportunity that I just wanted to ask the question, but just also bring attention to counselors to look at these types of things going forward and when the abatements will take effect and to what other, uh, sources are, are impacted by that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Uh, Counselor Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Counsel Hart, I appreciate that, that comment. That's exactly why I, I wanted to make sure and educate the, my colleagues that, uh, the current, um, revenue from that property is about, I think, a thousand or two thousand dollars, um, a year in property taxes. So even with the tax abatement over the next ten years, the city of Indianapolis is gonna generate about six million dollars. Like you, Counsel Hart, I, that's exactly one of the primary things I look at and how we use our incentives. So, um, I was pretty excited to be able to support this, given the, uh, benefit to the city of Indianapolis in tax revenue and to the, uh, township of Decatur.
All right. Any additional, uh, questions or comments from counselors? All right. Uh, seeing then, uh, Madam, Madam Clerk, I'd like to proceed to, to a roll call for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson.
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Ane.
Counsel Ane, aye.
Counsel Bane.
Counsel Bane, aye.
Counsel Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino.
Counselor Carlino.
Counsel Dill.
Counsel Dill, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans.
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye. Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray.
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart.
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Jones.
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison.
Counsel Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis.
Counsel Lewis, aye.
Counsel Masqueri.
Masqueri, aye.
Counsel McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maori.
Aye.
Counsel Oliver, uh, Counsel Osley.
Counsel Osley, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And the next item on our agenda is proposal three one three, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three hundred and thirteen, two thousand and twenty approves an inducement resolution for Pepper Mill TC LLC for the issuance of economic development multifamily housing revenue bonds in aggregate principal amount not to exceed fifty million to finance a portion of cost of acquisition, destruction, financing, renovation, and equipment in existing multifamily housing facility, commonly known as Pepper Mill Farms Apartments, consisting of one hundred and sixty apartment units, together with functionally related and subordinate, subordinate facilities for low and moderate income individuals and families located at six eight three zero Mill View Drive, District Thirteen. Patrick Coffey, President, Preservation Housing, Inc., gave a PowerPoint presentation making the following key points. One hundred and sixty unit total, forty-two percent covered by project-based housing assistant payments, HAP contract. HAP contracts will become a twenty-year contract after the first year. Eight units will be fully ADA accessible. Expected site improvements to begin in March, two thousand twenty-one, and the renovation will last six to ten months. The developer has also adopted XBE participation plan and has received a good faith memo from the Office on Minority and Women Business Development, OMWVD. The proposal passed out of committee by votes of nine to zero, and Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Very good. Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other additional comments from counselors? Counsel Hart. Counsel Hart, I think you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm not on that committee, so just to kinda get a better understanding, what cause happened for the effect of bonding fifteen million dollars, uh, to renovate the Pepper Mill Farms Apartments?
All right. Um, I will ask for someone from DMD if, um, Ms. Martin or Mr. Hunt is still available.
Apologies, uh, President, uh, Osley. I am here. Um, in regard to the question, the bond inducement, and, uh, uh, I believe our, our bond EDC counsel, Mr. Dave Court, may be on here, and will certainly be able to explain it better than I, but I will, uh, it relates to, uh, low income tax credit. bonding, or, or financing, rather, that is to be secured. And so the inducement is a signal to the bond, to the, the tax credit provider, the state, that this project is supported by the city and upon the delivery of the tax credits, then the city, this council, would support the issuance of this bond in the future. So the inducement does not issue the debt, is basically a intent, and again, I saw Mr. Corbett pop up, so you probably correct me here, but an intent to produce this bond in the future, at such time as the, the tax credits are available.
Mr. President, this is Dave Corbett. Would you like me to speak to the proposal?
Yes, please. Welcome, Mr. Corbett. Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Dave Corbett with the Law Firm Creek Devault Service, counsel to the Economic Development Commission. Ryan Hunt was correct in his description. Counselor Hart, the, the proposal for fifteen million dollars exceeds actually the anticipated amount of the bond. This is an inducement resolution which contemplates an application being filed with I H C D A for four percent tax credits. The, the amount is so large because the bond proceeds, once we go back to final approval, this is just the application phase with I H C D A. Once they receive those four credits, or four percent credits, and we go back for final approval, the bond proceeds will be used during the construction phase of the project. I H C D A will then allow the four percent tax credits to take out and refinance the bond financing once the project is put into service. So the city's financing or bond proceeds are really just used for construction financing during the time that it's most difficult to achieve financing and construct the project within means. This just provides a boost to the financing or provides a leverage during the construction phase that is then ultimately taken out by guaranteed financing or four percent tax credits.
This is Jim Crawford. I had trouble getting my microphone unmuted, but I echo what Mr. Corbett said. He was accurate with that. The bonds will just be in existence till the project's placed in service. They're not a general obligation to the city. No city funds are pledged to their repayment, and they'll be replaced by a HUD two twenty-one, two twenty-three F loan at the time the project's placed in service. We need the inducement resolution to be part of the application to the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority for the tax credit approval. They require an inducement resolution from the local bond issuer to be part of the application.
Thank you both, Mr. Corbett and Mr. Crawford. Counselor Hart, you had one additional question, is that right?
I just want to follow up and make sure I'm rephrasing it in layman's terms. Basically, the developer needs to use the bond bank's dollars to do the project, and then after the project is, is complete, they can refinance that with another financial institution to pay back the bond?
The bond bank isn't involved at all of the bonds to be privately placed. The Internal Revenue Code requires that at least fifty percent of the costs of the land and the buildings be financed by tax-exempt bonds that have private activity bond volume allocation to them in order for I H C D A to be able to give the tax credits to the project, which will be sold and provide the equity to the project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That, that helps a lot.
You're welcome.
President Osley, let me just add Counsel Hart, and then in eighteen months, once the bonds are put into service, the, these, the application, once approved, will guarantee or confirm that there will be takeout financing for the projects, further reducing the risk that the bonds will be outstanding for any longer than expected. So the application that's being filed out, once approved, will be the takeout financing, application for the four percent bonds, which will take out again the city bonds.
And we'll have to come back to the Economic Development Commission and to you, the city council, for approval of the final terms of the bonds and all the bond documents. This is just a necessary step, step to get it started and get the I H C D A to be able to take their action, so we can come back to you later on.
Counselor Gray here. What happens if you, what happens if you don't get approved?
If you don't get approved, these bonds won't be issued. These bonds will not be issued until the, the approval from I H C D A, and they'll be contemporating its closings of the bonds of a HUD loan and of the tax credit equity coming into the project. If any one of those three doesn't come to fruition, the project doesn't go forward. So you won't have bonds outstanding and, and have a, a negative vote by the I H C D A board. They have to approve it before we come back to you and before the bonds are issued.
So when you, when you bring this back to the council the next time for final approval, then all these tax credits and everything will already have been approved?
Will be approved, but will not be issued, so that we can tell you exactly what the amount of the tax credits are, what the sale price of those was, what equity comes into the project by the sale of those tax credits, the amount of the bonds, interest rate, et cetera. Okay, thank you.
Chairman Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I encourage my colleagues to approve and support this tonight. It will provide an opportunity to keep one hundred and sixty families in affordable, decent, and safe housing for them to have an updated and remodeled unit. I think these units are over twenty years old. They're on the far east side of Indianapolis. They're not in my council district, but I do support it, especially during COVID. These will be remodeled still, or COVID is still to go on for another year, maybe two years. We hope not, but if it does, we are undersourced in housings, in, in affordable housing. And if there's an opportunity for our council to keep people in, in safe and updated affordable housing, I urge you to do so. Thank you, Mr. President. I yield back.
Thank you, Chairman. Additional questions or comments from counselors? All right. Seeing then? Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counsel Ane?
Aye.
Counsel Bane?
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counsel Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino?
Counsel Carlino, aye.
Counsel Dill?
Counsel Dill, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans?
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans?
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves?
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray?
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart?
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson?
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Jones?
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis?
Counsel Lewis, aye.
Counsel Mascary?
Mascary, aye.
Counsel McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury?
Aye.
Counsel Oliver? Counsel Osalee?
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson?
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Mr. President, that was twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three fourteen, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, co-chair Counsel Carlino will be reading the minutes this evening as she chaired the meeting a few weeks ago for Public Safety. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Counsel Carlino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proposal number three fourteen approves certain public purpose grants totaling three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the Drug Free Community Fund. Director McLendon from Drug Free Marion County presented and stated that the following three categories are where the grant funds will be distributed. Number one, prevention and education. Number two, intervention and treatment. And finally, third, law enforcement and criminal justice. Counselor Boots moved, seconded by Counsel Ane, to send proposal three fourteen, two thousand and twenty, to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried with a vote of thirteen to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? All right. Seeing then? We'll proceed to the roll call for a vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson?
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Ane?
Aye.
Counsel Bane?
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counsel Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino?
Counsel Carlino, aye.
Counsel Dill?
Counsel Dill, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans?
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye.
Aye.
Counsel Jared Evans? Counsel Jared Evans?
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves? Counsel Graves? Counsel Gray?
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart?
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson?
Mr. President, permission to abstain due to my job?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes.
Thank you. Abstain.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis?
Permission to abstain, Mr. President?
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. Yes.
Counsel Mascary?
Mascary, aye.
Counsel McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury?
Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver? Counsel Osalee?
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson?
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Counsel Graves?
Counsel Gray, aye. Got booted out by Webex. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. President, the vote is, I have twenty-two, yay, two extensions.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three sixteen, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next three proposals, proposal three sixteen, three seventeen, three eighteen, are all related to the same project. It is a stormwater project regarding the Mini Creek Restoration Project. Robert Fry, the legal counsel for D P W, stated that the total for all three of these purchases will be approximately one hundred and forty thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty. Counsel, let's see, going back, proposal number three sixteen establishes an interest in making the purchase of specified land owned by Roy Higgins III or construction of a D P W project in the Mini Creek Restoration Project. This vote passed with a recommend, due pass recommendation that motion carried by a vote of twelve to zero, and I so move.
Second?
Very good. The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing then? Madam Clerk, let's proceed to, to roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson?
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Ane?
Aye.
Counsel Bane?
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counsel Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots?
I apologize, Mr. President. I stepped out, had to step out for a moment. Can you explain the vote?
Yeah, yes. Counselor, we're on proposal number three sixteen, Public Works, and Chairman Adamson had just read his.
Thank you.
Yes, and so we're now taking the vote.
Thank you very much. Counsel Boots, aye.
Thank you. Counsel Carlino?
Counsel Carlino?
Counsel Gray?
Counsel Dill, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans?
Counsel Ethan Evans, aye. Counsel Jared Evans?
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves?
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray?
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart?
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson?
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Jones?
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison?
Counsel Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis?
Counsel Lewis, aye.
Counsel Mascary?
Mascary, aye.
Counsel McCormick? Counsel McCormick? Counsel Maury?
Aye.
Counsel Osalee?
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson?
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you. Counsel McCormick? Mr. President, the vote is twenty-three zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three seventeen, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the same project, the Mini Creek Restoration Project. Proposal three seventeen establishes an interest in making a purchase of specified land owned by Belmatic Holdings LLC for the construction of the D P W project, Mini Creek Restoration. That vote also passed by a vote of twelve to zero, and I so move.
Second?
Mr. President, I believe you're.
Hey, Counsel Ethan?
Thank you, President. I just had a clarification question for, for the future reference, I guess. For these types of proposals, can, can they be taken together as a single vote because they deal with the same issue, or they have to be voted on separately?
Yeah, I believe the last time we, we wanted to do this together, that it was advised that we take them separately. So, so I did.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would advise that you can combine them, but that vote would have to go to a roll call vote. I wouldn't advise a consent vote to combine them, so it will be two separate votes, one to combine them, and then second round of roll call votes to approve the grouping. Thank you.
Additional questions from counselors? All right. Seeing then, Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Mr. President, Counsel Adamson?
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Ane?
Counsel Ane, aye.
Counsel Bane?
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Dill, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Aye.
Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye. Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgari.
Masgari, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Maury, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal three one eight, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number three eighteen, also part of the Mini Creek Restoration Project, establishes an interest in making purchase of specified land owned by Vanor Men Trust, trustee Empire Holdings Company, Principal James R. Hotka, for the construction of the DPW Mini Creek Restoration Project. This proposal also passed committee by a vote of twelve to zero and I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you help us with the roll call?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Jelk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgari.
Masgari, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is twenty-four zero.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three one nine, refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals three nineteen, three twenty, and three twenty-one together.
Consent.
Thank you, thank you. Proposal number three nineteen authorizes residential parking permit on McCarty Street near Fletcher Place in District Sixteen. Proposal number three twenty authorizes intersection controls at the Buck Creek Woods subdivision in District Twenty-five, and proposal number three twenty-one authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Boyd and Nelson Avenue in District Twenty-one. Counselor Boots moves, seconded by Counselor Gray, to send proposals number three nineteen, three three twenty-one to the full council with a do-pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of twelve to zero and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you help us with the roll call?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Jelk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgari.
Masgari, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Maury, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Mr. President, the vote is twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three three five, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, or proposal number three thirty-five, amends chapter two eighty-three of the code to establish the Indianapolis Youth Commission. It passed committee with a ten-oh do-pass recommendation. What this will do for us is it will form a youth committee that is under the council. President Osalee and I attended a event on May twenty-seventh where we were there just to listen to kids that had been brought together by Voices Corp., the Marion County Commission on Youth, IPS, Lawrence Township Schools, Pike Prep Academy, and the Urban League to their Indie Youth Speak event. And they told us that what they, what they really wanted was to be heard. The President and I talked about this and we decided this is something we wanted to work on and focus on creating. The goal would be that we would have a youth council, the counselors would be able to work with them, address issues with them, help them get access to government, along with making sure that they're being heard about issues that matter to them. Our county is so big, our, our district's so diverse that this is going to be a great effort for us. Yes. So, sorry, I apologize, I've lost my place, it's very late for me. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Very good. And the motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are comments from counselors? Counselor Carlino.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Brown and all who worked on this policy. I'd like to be added as a cosponsor, please, if you're taking them.
Thank you very much. Very good. Counselor Ethan Evans.
I echo Counselor Carlino's comments, and also would like to be added as a cosponsor. I think this is a wonderful new addition, and hopefully will be very representative of our city and our youth that have been hopefully underrepresented at the city level, and will get the chance going forward to be represented. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chairwoman Jackson.
Mr. President, I gave comments in committee and also asked in committee to be a cosponsor. I don't see my name. If you could add me as a cosponsor, I greatly appreciate it.
Yes, definitely, thank you. Counselor Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to reiterate or re, I guess, repeat the great nature of this proposal, and particularly the involvement of Voices in McCoy, I think is a, a great boost in the arm of this opportunity, and I had my own personal conversation with John Brennan of McCoy and was truly impressed with the depth of his knowledge and experience with such matters, and, and I think with their guidance, that this will be an excellent opportunity for us to get this off the ground, and the one issue that I did discuss with him was the eligibility requirements to make sure we maybe show a preference for system-impacted candidates, youth for the commission, but not make that a mandatory prerequisite. And I think he and I agreed that we would not want to hamper our ability to appoint eligible candidates, but can in the rules and the policymaking of this initiative, make it a preference that we look towards system-impacted candidates. So, with that, I do express my support and do hope to be a cosponsor and encourage others to support it as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just want to echo what I, you know, said essentially in committee that I asked to be a cosponsor into this because it really touches close to home with me as, you know, somebody who's experienced some of these things that the system-impacted youth have, you know. I, I offered my, you know, the opportunity to be part of this council and try and share my experiences with individuals who are able to be part of this committee, and, and I am very sincere about that, and I really intend on doing that if, if it's allowed of me. So, you know, I offered my cosponsorship in committee, it still stands, and I look forward to this passing and be part, to be part of it as it goes forward. So, thank you for the idea, you know, President Osalee and Counselor Brown, I think this is phenomenal. Thank you for, you know, listening to the community and bringing it to us as a council. I think this is, is a great step forward to help the city.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Additional questions or comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you help us with roll call?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye, and if they're taking any more cosponsors, I would really like to be a cosponsor as well. I was supportive of this in committee and am so tonight as well.
Thank you. Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Jelk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans. Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgari.
Counselor Masgari, aye, and I'm getting tired.
Counselor McCormick.
Aye, Counselor McCormick, aye. And I'd also be, like to be added as a cosponsor as well, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Maury.
Aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye, and just want to say thank you for the, to the cosponsors, and we have documented all of, all the names. Thank you.
Counselor Potts.
Thank you, Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, the vote is twenty-four zero.
Mr. President, is it, is it too late to be added as a cosponsor?
No, not, not at all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Mr. President, was my vote recorded on that?
I asked the clerk, assistant clerk, and she said yes. Mrs. Bain asked me, yes. Yes, you were filed as yes.
Okay, I didn't hear my name, thank you.
Well, let's just take it just for, for clarity, because I did ask the assistant clerk, was that an a or an a?
It was a yea, thank you.
Okay, all right. We now have that confirmed. Yes, I wasn't sure myself. All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal number three three six, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Counselor Brown.
Proposal three three six, amends chapter one fifty-one, articles five, seven, and nine of the code. It passed committee with a do-pass recommendation, do-pass recommendation as amended, seven to four. I so move, and I really would like to defer to council, councils' council, to explain this one to everybody.
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Comments from counselors, but I would like Counsel Kim, if she wouldn't mind, to just give a brief analysis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me? Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal three thirty-six does two things. First, it's a cleanup ordinance that removes state mandated requirements that are no longer in effect, and second, it codifies processes and organizational structures that are already in place. Just to give a high-level summary, I'll touch upon three main changes. So, in sections two and three, as I said earlier, we're simply codifying past organizational structures. Section one eighty-one ninety-eight deals with appointed staff officers. We're renaming the research director to policy director, and we're adding the public affairs manager position. Further, section one fifty-one dash one oh six clarifies how personnel policies will be issued in the council office, consistent with past practice. We're gonna institute a procedure by which the president and the clerk work together to issue office policies. Lastly, section one fifty-one dash one nine oh four, again, consistent with past practice, gives the president contracting authority. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Counsel Kim. Questions from, from counselors? All right, seeing none, Madam, yes, Counsel, Ethan Evans.
Sorry, just real quick, can I just clarify the contracting authority part, real quick, if that's possible?
Yes, please.
So, that section enables the president to execute contracts on behalf of the city county council.
Let me see here now.
Which, which we have done in the past, which is basically codifying past practice.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, thank you, counselors. Madam Clerk, seeing none, the motion's been, will you give us a roll call, folks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, nay.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, nay.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye. Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dill.
Counselor Jelk, nay.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans. Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counsel, Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, no.
Counselor Mascary.
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Aye.
Counselor Oliver, I'm sorry. Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
I'm sorry, Ms. Clerk. Uh, Counselor Maury, I'm, I'm in, I'm in a nay. I apologize.
Thank you. Counselor Osalee.
Uh, Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts. Counselor Potts, oh, just a second. Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
As a president, I have nineteen yea, five nay.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. There's business on the special service district councils and there's no business under new business. So the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournments. The doctored agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Chair rocking axes, Counsel Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by all counselors in memory of Thomas Michael Mascary, by all counselors in memory of Beth Bateman, by Counselor Lewis in memory of Thomas Leon Jones, Timothy Dion Jones, and Lydia Karen Allen, by Counselor Maury in memory of Ruth Marie Lesko, by Counselor Gray in memory, in memory of Sheila Williamson, by Counselor Adamson in memory of Gertrude Julia Russe, by Counselor Osalee in memory of Charles Griffin Jr. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request that this motion be made part of the permanent records of this body and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counsel Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received and the request is so ordered. Before we conclude, I just want to wish all of you a happy holiday as we conclude this amazing, amazing year and wish you the very, very best. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.